All righty. Good morning, everyone, and welcome. And over to you, Chair Harrington.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Washington County Housing Authority Board of Directors meeting for this wonderful Tuesday, October 7, 2025. Clerk Moss, over to you.
Thank you, Director Harrington. Washington County's meeting is the Housing Authority Board of Directors for this regular session, October 7, 2025. Director Snyder?
Here.
Director Willie?
Here.
Director Fai?
Raza.
Director Savara?
Here.
Director Trees?
Here.
And Director Harrington?
Here. All righty. The next item on the agenda is public communication. Clerk Moss, who do we have today?
I did not see anyone sign up in the auditorium. Is there any member in the auditorium? We should probably public comment on any housing authority-related item for up to two minutes. Give them a moment. Just raise hands. Start coming forward. Not seeing any in the room. Would any member via Zoom wish to provide a public comment to the Housing Authority for up to two minutes? Give you just a moment. Do you realize the raise-hand function? Not seeing any hands. Director Harrington.
Thank you, Clerk Moss, and I would be remiss if I didn't say welcome back to Director Savara and congratulations to him in being a parent and catching us all up a few minutes before the meeting started. So really delightful. There's one item on today's consent agenda, and that's the minutes from the September 2, 2025, meeting. What are the wishes of the board?
A motion to approve them.
We have a motion to approve today's consent agenda. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, directors. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously six to zero. Today, we have two different presentations. The first one is on emergency housing vouchers. So welcome to our expert staff, who work hard every single day to help take care of members of our community who rely upon this assistance. So we're going to be thanks to these two different presentations. They're catching us up on the latest circumstances for both of these really vital programs. So welcome and thank you.
Good morning, everyone. I'm going to start off virtually today. For the record, my name is Molly Rogers, Executive Director of the Housing Authority of Washington County. Before we start our presentation-
And you're off at a conference today with your fellow Housing Authority directors. So thank you for joining us virtually.
Yes, the Housing Authority Association is actually, we're not in, we're all in the same boat in a lot of these issues. And we're, it's been very sobering hearing from, say, Home Forward. They have over 400 households affected by the emergency housing voucher sunset. So we're, we need to collaborate and work together on solutions. But before I get into the presentation, I did want to use this opportunity to share with you the status of the federal shutdown as it pertains to the Housing Authority of Washington County. In our department, we rely on federal revenues for rental assistance programs, public housing subsidies, and grant funds for the continuum of care program. We have received notice from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD, that funding for the Housing Choice Voucher Program, our largest rental assistance program, mainstream vouchers, and the emergency housing vouchers will be front-loaded and funded through mid-November. So that's great news. For public housing subsidy, HUD is anticipating that that funding will be available through November, and we have submitted draws for funding in advance of the shutdown deadline. And for the continuum of care, these grants were already awarded and could continue regardless of a shutdown. And to err on the side of caution, we submitted draws against our existing award. Based on what we know right now, we're not anticipating immediate impacts to our work. Our main priority continues to be the safety, stability, and dignity of our residents and participants. And this is a good time to remind ourselves of the historical context, which is that the longest shutdown we have experienced as a country is 35 days, and that happened in 2017 to 2018. So we will come back to you if a shutdown continues beyond mid-November, as we would likely experience cash flow challenges at that stage. At this point, we'll continue to monitor and update you as needed. Today, we are lifting up another challenge imposed by the current administration, the early sunset of the Emergency Housing Voucher Program, or EHB for short. And EHB was a new rental assistance program lifted up during COVID to mitigate the impacts of the pandemic on those who were homeless or at risk of homelessness. We are not asking any action from the Board of Directors today. This presentation is timed to align with notifications and communications we will be providing to the affected households. Next slide, please. The purpose of this presentation is to inform your board and the public of the challenges our emergency housing voucher holders and the community will face in about a year to a year and a half from now, when this assistance is currently planned to sunset. This early sunset is about four years earlier than initially legislated via the COVID-related ARPA funding. We will share with your current plan to support as many of these households as we can in some kind of continuity of assistance. And we're going to elevate the potential risks if we're not able to secure new funding or support for the remaining EHB households. Next slide, please. The rest of the presenters will be provide you an overview of the EHB program, a profile of the kinds of households who benefited from the program, what continuity of assistance means, and what are the potential risks if we cannot secure sufficient assistance. And we also want to leave enough time for your questions. And at this stage, I'd like to turn it over to M. Nichols. HUD moving to work later.
Good morning. Am I close enough to the microphone? Okay, great. Thanks so much. I'm M. Nichols. I am a PHA program coordinator. I work on housing authority policy, policy context, policy monitoring, and policy maintenance. For the next few minutes, I'll be sharing a brief background of the emergency housing voucher, and specifically, the emergency housing voucher at HAWK. So as Molly indicated, the emergency housing voucher was created through the American Rescue Plan in 2021 to provide rental assistance to households who are homeless or at risk of homelessness. These were originally slated to be available until September 30, 2030. So the early sunset is a significant difference than what we were originally anticipating and what those households were originally anticipating. Over 56,000 households are assisted by EHB nationwide. So this is by no means something that we are in alone. As noted, Home Forward has approximately 400. So our neighbors are impacted by this across the region. HAWK was granted 89 non-renewable emergency housing vouchers. We began referrals in mid-2021 through our coordinated entry system, and we're fully leased in 2022. When we say "non-renewable" in this context, we're indicating two things. One is that the funding was always temporary, just temporary with a longer term than we're now facing, and also that these vouchers were not transferable to other households after a certain point. So after September 2023, we were no longer able to issue turnover vouchers to other households. And the program, when somebody left the program, we would lose that voucher. It wouldn't go to a new household. So at this time, the program has dwindled a little bit through attrition. 78 households continue to participate in this program at HAWK. The emergency housing voucher sunset, we were notified in March 2025 that the program would sunset and that we would not be getting additional funding beyond what was allocated in 2025 for 2026. This funding has not been included in any of the proposed congressional budgets, so we aren't seeing sort of an avenue for any continued funding for this program at this time, which is why we have transitioned to discussing the end of the program. The impact of this sunset, again, 56,000 households nationally, 78 in Washington County, many more regionally. These families, I'll note that when I say "families," I am using the HUD definition of family, which includes single individual households, include a total of 185 individuals. Eighty-four of these individuals are children. Sixty-seven are elderly or disabled, according to the HUD definition. More might be disabled, according to other definitions. Eighty percent of the households are extremely low income. So for a household of four, that would mean under $37,000 annually. And the median income for the program overall is below $12,000. So these are households without a lot of options for continuing to maintain a rental payment without continued subsidy of some sort. Our sunset projection right now, the blue line shows our projection, if we do exactly what we are doing right now, our funding would be anticipated to run out in November 2026. We're taking immediate action to extend that timeline to April 2027. And our projections will continue to evolve as we get more concrete information about program attrition and program costs. With that, I'll turn it over to Liz Morris, our Rental Assistance Program Coordinator or Program Manager.
Thank you, M. Good morning, directors. For the record, I'm Liz Morris, the Rental Assistance Division Manager. Nice to see you. I'm going to talk a little bit about our continuing of assistance through the end of the sunset and what our phase plans are. Apologize if it catches up. This slide is an overview of the phases that just kind of shows. I'll go into more detail of what are four phases that we're going to be looking at as we help our households through this transition. We are currently in Phase One. Over the next several slides, we'll talk about what, like, the extending of that deadline and timelines that M. had mentioned. Those 78 households, that we're going to be adding them to our Housing Choice Voucher waitlist, outreach to the households. We're going to be prioritizing any transfers, since this is an end-of-program subsidy. They do get that priority. What we're going to be doing to transfer the 10 to 20 households to a mainstream program, and the steps that that takes, as well as referring to any other subsidies and open waitlists that we will have opportunities to. Create possible options for any of those remaining households after the initial mitigations have happened, and we are able to see that what is the makeup of the households that are left, and how can we best adjust and pivot to serve them. And then final sunset preparations. Diving deep into Phase One, which is currently going on, we had to request a waiver from HUD to transfer all the current participants onto the Emergency Housing, sorry, onto the Housing Choice Voucher waitlist, which is closed. We did receive that waiver approval in September 10, 2025. Our next step is to reach out to these households and inform them of this step and process, as well as what our plan will be. Once we're able to move them to the HCV waitlist, we're able to then draw the households that are eligible for the mainstream vouchers. It's a multi-step process. Just enough delay in that slide advancement. Okay. Our Phase Two is going to be starting this winter, where we're going to continue to monitor those households that remain on the Emergency Housing Voucher Program, to prioritize them with any additional opportunity that comes up from our other funding programs. So as we wait for congressional approval of a budget, and we know what our funding will be for our other programs, we might see that there are spots that are going to be opened up, that we might be able to serve these households. However, that's still the question. So we're going to continue to prioritize and monitor. So monitoring those federal appropriations and those economic impacts are going to be really important for our participants and for us to support and communicate with them. Our Phase Three is going to be beginning as we go into that last year of funding for the households. Connecting with families that continue to remain on that program, the goal is we'll continue to see families move off into other permanent supportive housing funding. But as we have households that are still on the programs, we want to make sure we're connecting them with possible housing navigation searches to other affordable properties, if that's the ability, to see if there's any other alternate state or regional funding that we can support them with, and continue to prioritize them with any of our federal resources that we do have access to. And then finally, our Phase Four process will begin in early 2027. When we are doing that final outreach to those remaining households, we may not be able to continue to serve every household that is currently served right now. So we will outreach, and if we are having to give notice of their complete termination and end of this participation on their program, we'll be informing the landlords of this, as well as we'll be continuing to provide a continued, more in-depth services. We always provide resources to community members looking for housing. We want to provide more navigation and resources for at least 90 days after their sunset, when they're still no longer our participants. I'm going to pass it over to Jill, who's going to talk about what our current next steps are.
Thank you, Liz. And for the record, I'm Jill Chen, Deputy Director. And my slides are really about what comes next, and what do we, as a community, do to help our residents in these housing situations? As Liz mentioned, we have already started the implementation of the HUD administrative waivers and have started the streamlining of the programs. We expect to be notifying the households impacted immediately after this meeting this week, and we'll be reaching out to them by email, as well as by phone, to make sure that they have been contacted. We also want to make sure that we are monitoring the available resources for EHB and this EHB funding projections. One of the things we do intend to work closely and work with our clients on is working with them to find affordable housing, regulated affordable housing, where they can get on the waitlist, where they can find some kind of permanent housing, and working also with our service providers, both on the serving of the housing navigation, as well as the homeless services side. The idea is that with continuing advocacy and with partner industry groups, then we will be able to find something for all the households coming out of EHB. But in reality, we are also realizing that not all of them may be able to find housing. Based on our projections, it could be as high as 10 to 25 households may not find housing through this mechanism. As Liz may have mentioned, our federal funding sources are essentially maxed out. We're actually in a shortfall situation. So the Housing Authority of Washington County does not have, you can call it, free vouchers floating around for, to accommodate our emergency household, households. So we are looking to essentially ensure that anything the community might be able to support and find, we are hoping that they will come to us and let, inform us as well. Any questions?
Thank you, staff. At this juncture, I'd like to turn it over to the Housing Authority Board to see if you have any questions or comments.
Thank you for the presentation. And I may have missed this, but if they are moving from EHB to the HCV waiting list, do they, where do they enter the waiting list?
I can answer that question. So with our process of getting that waiver from HUD and with our administrative plan, there is, we are able to pull off that Housing Choice Voucher with preference. One of the main preferences is because of loss of voucher funding. So when we're able to pull off, they will actually move to the top.
Thank you.
Yeah, if I could just follow up with that. So what we're trying to do is move those folks laterally. So there isn't going to be any loss of support. It's not going to be an additional burden. We're trying to find, make sure that we, we continue the level of services that they've, that they've appreciated. So yeah, I just wanted to make sure that that was what, where we're going with this.
That is the goal.
Yeah, to put it differently, landing from emergency voucher subsidies to more permanent, longer-term, stable vouchers.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
Thanks, Commissioner Fai. It's probably a sticky-wicket kind of a question, but I noticed a lot of the strategizing you're doing is about moving folks to other federal streams. Can you talk about your rationale for not thinking about ARLa? You know, obviously there's sunset conversations. There's a lot there. So definitely, definitely recognize the complexity there. And I'm just thinking about who the EHB vouchers were for originally, right? I mean, these were for people experiencing homelessness, at risk of homelessness, a pretty high-needs population. So I imagine, you know, the, there's probably some overlap, even now, for folks that have been relatively stably housed for a few, a few years. But could you just talk about kind of that, that, you know, process that you've been going through? I'm sure that's something you considered, but, you know, talk us through that.
Thank you, Director Savara. That is one of the options we are looking at, which is the Regional Local Rent Assistance Program, and are in discussions with our colleagues on the homeless services side. They have also certain criteria to meet in order to be able to shift the households from EHB to ARLa. And we have provided them as much of the information as possible. And one of the processes is to make sure that there could be that matching up from EHB to ARLa, if possible.
Those dollars are pretty stretched thin, and the current revenue forecasts are coming in with flat to below because of the tie of the federal tax code to the Oregon tax code, which affects the SHS revenue. So we're in a world of hurt across the board. More demand and fewer revenue dollars to support supply.
Yep.
Welcome back. It's a really tough reality. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Ms. Rogers.
Yeah, I just wanted to say something similar, that we're still needing to monitor and track the forecasting of the supportive housing services revenues. But it is something that we're giving ourselves in 2026 to really track and see if we can move some of those folks over to any additional ARLa, if we have additional ARLa. Those are conversations we are having with Metro. But just out of our context setting, I'm hearing from Ivory Matthews just this morning, that they're trying to have those conversations with the county, because they're thinking about something similarly. But luckily, we're in Washington County, where we, we have two arms of our, of the work of our house, and we can more internally come to you all, to both the Board of County Commissioners, as well as our Housing Authority Board, to have a more streamlined approach here.
So I'll close out here. I want to thank our staff for all of your passion, determination, and compassion, as well as your creative problem solving. You are trying every avenue to support people in our community who have no other means to turn to. And these are the very folks that we want to support. That's why we're in this business. And thank you very much for fighting for these folks and helping each of these individuals and families get, get the services to the best that we're able to deliver. I know it's really hard, but we value your bringing this information to us and being very thoughtful about it. Thank you so much. And next, we're going to move on to another type of voucher, the project-based voucher and the waitlist associated there. So please, take it away.
Thank you, Chair Harrington. And for the record, again, I'm Jill Chen, Deputy Director of the Housing Authority of Washington County. And as earlier presented about the federal action, we're actually pleased to provide some good news about rental assistance and excited about the opening of the project-based waitlist and the situation and the update. In this presentation, our plan is to update our board on the implementation of a zone-based waiting list preference and future project-based voucher waitlist opening, and making this available to our community who want to live in regulated affordable housing, including potentially those who may need affordable housing through the EHB program. Our agenda today is to talk about the existing project-based context, our proposed changes to the waitlist management, sort of an explanation also about why now, because we have been having project-based waitlists for a while, some of the implementation challenges and targeted outcomes, as well as questions. A quick overview about project waitlist system in Washington County. We use project-based waitlists largely for local development of affordable housing. Currently, we have 37 properties with contracts for project-based waitlist, a total of 569 vouchers. That is representing about 18% of our total Section 8 vouchers from the federal government. Total Section 18 is about 25, a little over 2,500. And our project-based vouchers help spur a total of almost 2,200 affordable housing. So the vouchers help the operations of these buildings and help very low-income households afford the rent. Residents for the project-based waitlist are through a targeted system with specific criteria and the specific buildings. Some of these are for seniors. As you can see in the Opel, that is for senior housing. We also have veterans in those units using our Veterans Administrative Supportive Housing vouchers, also foster families with the FYI vouchers, domestic violence survivors, as well as formerly a homeless household. Our current project-based waitlist system is somewhat dispersed and a bit more confusing in some ways. We have 37 sites, of which 20 have individual waitlist. There's also one in which it comprises of 17 properties. This is a partial implementation of our Moving to Work flexibility. The waitlist is pulled, including using our public housing waitlist, primarily for the larger units. And these are pulled based on priorities and preferences with household size, income levels, certain populations. So it's currently a mishmash, if you can call it, of different waitlist systems that we are hoping to sort of update and streamline and make it easier for our community, not only our sites, as well as our households or residents, as well as for our community and our own team. With that, I'll pass it over to Liz Morris.
Hello again, Liz Morris, with the Rental Assistance Division Manager for the Department of Housing, Housing Authority of Washington County. I get to talk about what we're changing. And so I'm really excited. As we, as Jill had mentioned, we have 37 properties. And with our Moving to Work designation, which I'll get into in a few moments, we've had the ability to kind of think outside the box. And now we're thinking even further outside- outside that box, because we want to continue to improve our processes for our community and our staff to make sure that this is efficient and we can serve people faster. So our proposal is, once all our current waitlists have been exhausted, so we're going to be doing this in tandem. So we're starting this, and as they're exhausted, we're going to be pulling from the new list. So it's going to be a combination. So it may not be administratively easy for our team members at first, but we'll have the dream situation occur when we're able to select from the general project-based waitlist based on the zone that that property is in and that the applicants have said they want to live in. Right now, people might say that they want to live in Washington County. They currently might live in Tigard, and they get pulled for Forest Grove, which is fantastic. But if their community is in Tigard, that can be a really hard decision, especially if they have a job or childcare and those expectations. So this, people will be able to say, I want all four zones, or I only want this zone because that's where it's a priority for me. So then as they get polled, we can get them connected to those properties in that area. So if it's, it will be a preference. So people, again, will have the opportunity to apply for all four specific general waitlists, which we will be opening this fall, next month. So HUD approved with our moving-to-work status to provide some waivers to the way that we operate our project-based voucher program. So this was our ability to increase the limitations of caps that non-MTW housing authorities have, so we can continue to coordinate with affordable housing partners to build those opportunities for pre-qualifying inspections, alternate payment standards, and strategic waitlist requirements. So we've experienced Huck, we have our Yardi platform, which is the software company, and the way that our applicants apply for the different waitlists. And we're going to be utilizing this platform to continue to open our waitlists and manage those four new properties. We have updated our administrative plan for these preferences. So it will be, continue to be updated to make sure that we're aligning our process and our policy. But why are we doing this now? And the miss of everything is because we know that we need to continue to grow and change. The applicant should be able to indicate that preference for that specific area. It's going to be really important for them to figure out what makes the most sense for them, right, for their family. Are the properties, as the vacancies are empty, sometimes it takes a while for us to find an applicant to connect with them because of our current process. We want to mitigate that so that vacancies are brief, and people can be connected to those properties and the units are filled. So our partnerships are thriving, our participants are thriving, and the program is thriving. Administratively, this will also help so we can make sure that the team members are able to do one touches with those households as much as we can, instead of having to refer them to multiple different properties as well. So with the map that showed kind of the smattering of our 37 current properties, we are, we have identified the four zones, and that is where they are located. So we'll have a Forest Grove, Cornelius, a Hillsborough specific, the Beaverton Cedar Mill in north of 26, as well as the Tigard and Toowallton Valley. So as we continue to expand in the future years with new properties coming online, we'll, we'll make sure that we connect them into the correct zone, so it's easy and marketable on our website and our waitlist application portal for our applicants to know where they're hoping to find locational support for their unit that they're applying for. So some of these key things, we will be opening our waitlist November 4th through November 10th. We're going to open it for one week, and then we are going to close it. The reason we're opening it for one week is because we want to make sure that it's accessible. So if you're super fast on the computer versus maybe needing some more time or support from our staff, we're going to randomize the lottery of everybody who applies in that window. And then they'll be ordered based on that randomization. It's going to take us through the end of the year to kind of solidify that. And then we're going to reopen the list, and they're just going to remain open at that point. Those applicants can apply to all four zones. There's no limit. If they're currently on any of our other waitlists, and we're going to be encouraging those emergency housing voucher families to apply for those waitlists as well. We're going to let them know so they can make sure that they get onto that waitlist with that preference as they are opening. We're only adding them directly to the Housing Choice voucher based on our abilities through regulation. The households will be able to turn down up to three referrals. So if they've decided that they get pulled for one property in Hillsborough, and that's not the property that maybe meets their needs, or there's some reason, they can say, that wasn't the property that I wanted. But there's going to be a point where it's like, you've tried three times, we're going, we're going to have to like remove you, maybe not the area that you wanted to live in. Annually, we're going to do what's called Save My Spot. So we're going to confirm the households that are on our open waitlist. That's why we're going to continue to keep it open, so we can make sure that the households are the most ones that are actively needing housing in Washington County. And that way, we have also data and statistics on the need that is out there. It'll help continue versus the ability to have opening and closing of waitlists can be administratively burdened, the ability to have to also confirm, which are purge those households on a basis, which is a requirement. That way, we are able to make sure that the households are kind of always relevant and connecting when they need housing. All of the 24 public project-based vouchers and public housing waitlists will be exhausted. And as they're exhausted, that property will go into that zone. So we'll be kind of multiple, we're adding four waitlists before we reduce a lot of waitlists, but it is happening fast. We do have a lot of waitlists have already been mostly exhausted. One more poll on that waitlist, and then it'll be transferred over. So those retired active waitlists, and we're hoping that in about two to three years, we'll only have four zoned project-based waitlists instead of 20-plus waitlists for the team members to have to manage. Our targeted outcomes is just to help connect applicants to units and properties faster. We want to have less vacancy times, and we want to really continue the efficiencies. And just like all of our process, like we did with our original general waitlist that we had for project-based management, we're going to monitor and see what tweaks and pivots we need to make to ensure that this process is reaching those targeted outcome goals. And just one more reminder is that we will be opening our waitlist. We're making sure that it's on our website, communications going out to our service providers, our community. We're going to have public releases. We are just ensuring that this is widespread, so people know of this resource that is out there. And we will also be very transparent and clear. That doesn't mean that if, that is a resource that can get pulled the day after the waitlist closes, but it is to set up so we can have that long-term ability to pull people. Thank you so much. Any questions?
And I know the Housing Authority, as well as the Housing Services Departments, both of them have great community connections and networks for getting that word out. So I want to turn it over to my colleagues to see if you have any questions or comments.
I'll go. I have two quick questions. First of all, I thank you for this presentation and the work you're doing, the previously and to this project as well. Just so I understand, and this waitlist is available to the four-zone locations, properties that you identified? So it's directly available to the people that currently occupy in these properties?
It's available to anybody who is needing housing in Washington County to apply for those waitlists, yes. And then they'll be connected to a property once there's a vacancy. So if there's a vacancy that comes up and we're notified by a property here in Hillsborough, we would then pull off of that Hillsborough waitlist to connect one of those households with that opening that is there. But anybody in Washington County, anybody outside of Washington County needing housing, they have the ability to apply to the open waitlist.
And then my, thank you, that clarification. I was, I almost interrupted you when you were doing your presentation to ask that clarification, but you were in a rhythm. So the questions I have is, talk to us a little bit more about your outreach. How do you intend to get the word out that this resource is available? And more particularly, are you going to connect to the supportive housing services, people who are currently in transitional housing, whether that is POD villages, or the Hardwood Commons, or anything that, that side of the work that's happening? And then the other question is that, second question I have is something you actually mentioned, which is that, you know, we're going to follow people's preference locations because of if they have a childcare, or they prefer to live in Tigard and stay for work or childcare. You said, I'm interested in what are the touchpoints from the county side? Let's say I say, I like to stay in Tigard, but Cornelius came available. Would there be a touchpoint between you and I to say, hey, Nefisa, there is a property available in Cornelius. Would you consider that? And things do change, so I don't know if there is that opportunity to sort of connect with the individual that applied, to offer them the first location that came in to that. And then part two of that reminder is, talk to us about the process to the waitlist. How does somebody become first? Is it first come, first served? Is it the timing of the application within that week? How does, or is it alphabetical names? Or is it different criterias such as socioeconomic, disabilities, things like that you're considering in your criteria to be, to be available, to become that number one, to get the call, that there is a property that's available for me?
Thank you. And if I missed one of your questions, please let me know. I'm going to start with your question number two, which is that with the opening of the four zones, people are going to be able to choose which zone they want to apply for. It could be one and two, it could be one, two, three, four, it could just be one. They're going to have the opportunity. And if they change their mind afterwards, because in six months on the road, they also opened up and said, yes, I actually would like to live in Forest Grove, or I'm open to it. I'm open to living in Forest Grove as well as Tigard. They would be able to apply at that time to get onto the Forest Grove Cornelius waitlist. So that option would be open. However, when we are pulling off of a waitlist, we're going to be polling for the property if it is in the Tigard zone. We're going to be pulling off that Tigard waitlist. And so we'll bleed into your question number three, as how folks are eligible when they're on those waitlists to be pulled off. I'm going to try to keep this both high-level without going into too technical, but I also want to give you, answer your question thoroughly. And I can always brief more on it if you would like some more details. With those households, when they apply for our waitlist, we have right now on, off of those 20-plus waitlists, we have about 7,500 people on them. And that's after we whittled that down from, I believe it was 18,000 last year. We did a confirmation because some of those waitlists had been open in 2011, 2019, 2020. So just they grow over time. When a unit is available and somebody comes to the top of the list, they do get selected and referred to that, to that property for screening, as well as screening for our eligibility. For this waitlist, the households, when we're opening it for that week long, we don't know how many applicants we're going to get. It could be 3,000, it could be 10,000. Once we're done, we're going to do a randomization. So if you were, then you'll be placed in order on that waitlist as one through, let's say, 10,000, right? And then from there, we're going to poll run. So we do that so it can be more accessible for households who might need longer with the application or support with the technical component, the ability to apply. And then after that, it's going to be open to apply as we go. For eligibility, we do screen first through households that are extremely low-income. So they do have to be under that 30%, of area median income. And once we've exhausted all that, we might be able to go up to 50. But it's also dependent on the requirements for each of those 37 properties. So the eligibility could be slightly different in each one. So we go through that. And so that's where the opportunity is, that somebody could refuse, or maybe they're not eligible. So we might do targeted based on that preference. So if we're polling for one of our senior properties, we're not going to pull anybody in that jurisdiction that doesn't meet that requirement. We're able to actually say, what are number one through 20 of the people who meet that requirement of the senior housing, and then we outreach to them. For our general waitlist, Jill, did you want to, go ahead. For our general waitlist outreach, we pretty much open up a waitlist about once a year on average. And part of our goals is to make sure that we are very communicative. We have our great outreach team, public relations team, who help draft public notices, as well as press releases. We're updating all of our housing networks, including the homeless services and the advisory committees. We inform libraries and letting them know, because a lot of people may come into the libraries requesting to use their computer to apply. We do community engagement with local agencies like the service providers that are providing the PODs, rest, you know, villages, so they can make sure that they're connecting those households to get them applied when the waitlist is open. In addition to having email blasts that go out to our current waitlist holders to let them know the opportunities that are out there, we have a community newsletter that we are always opening and asking people to make sure that they're subscribing to, so we can inform them of those waitlist openings. I'm sure I'm missing a few things, but I feel like I want to let Jill reach into any of the things that I'm missing.
And I just wanted to make sure that Commissioner Fieh, that we are doing this on a randomized basis. It's not a first come, first served. And we are trying to make it as equitable as possible. And reaching out to our different partners, including those from our communities of color, as well as our, you can call it, housing navigators who are in our homeless services. So the folks, for example, in our PODs, in our different, coming out from homelessness, would be aware of this, as well as the folks who are already on our different media outreach systems.
Thank you, Jill. The thing that worries me about randomized is if it's, like, I'm always, I think we just have to maybe publish that process of that randomization. Is it a human that's picking the names of the person, or is it a computer that spits out a number? Because then it sort of calms and further disseminates the information that's built into your process that it's fair, or you're trying to be equitable. So I think that's the thing I was teasing out around the first come, first served, or is the randomization that's built into the process is how does that? So, thank you.
And let me remind all board members, as always, you have the opportunity of one-on-one follow-up with staff. Are there any other questions or comments?
Just an observation or feedback, I guess I would provide on Slide 12. This is pretty specific. But, you know, sometimes we create maps and tools and things that create artificial divides, so to speak. And it occurs to me that when I'm looking at this map, if I was looking at the descriptions and not the map, and I was in either the Hillsborough or the Beaverton Cedar Mill zone, or I was thinking of just applying in that zone, there are a lot of properties in those zones that are very close to each other. The others are not so much quite grouped that way. But, you know, it's just, you know, this is where it's both a science and an art. And I, I don't know how to convey that to individuals, but I would hope when you all are interacting and counseling with applicants, that that is mentioned, particularly if they're, if they're in those areas that closely border each other.
Thank you, Commissioner Stader. For, I think one of the reasons we are suggesting a household could apply to all four zones is for that very purpose. So that if they're interested, say, in Hillsborough, there are a number of properties close to Beaverton, as well as close to Forest Grove Cornelius.
And we'll market it by putting all of those properties, so they know what is currently included, and continue to update that in the zones. So it'll be marketing, hopefully, visually on our website that is clear. So it'll be marketing, hopefully visually, on our website that is clear, but that feedback is helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none. Thank you very much to our staff. I know you're really putting in creative solutions, and a great presentation for making it clear what the goals and objectives are, and ensuring that we've got the most efficient and useful system as possible to serve the needs of our community members. We're really proud of you. Thank you. All right. Next, we'll move on to our second public communication opportunity for this, the Washington County Housing Authority Board of Directors. Clerk Moss, who do we have?
Thank you, Director Harrington. We have Dale Feig. Dale?
I appreciate Chair Harrington, how you esteemed, complimented, and said appropriate statements to the Housing Authority of Washington County. And also, I appreciate the detailed questions that you asked, Nefisa Phi, even though it took a lot of time. And I appreciate people having the opportunity to come back and talk with you personally to get more detailed information. I also forgot to say, Chair Harrington, and Housing Authority Directors Michael Savara and Caroline Roper. Because you're all part of this team together, supporting housing in Washington County. I didn't email you ahead of time, so you don't have anything in writing. Or maybe I did. I did email you something on this. I take that back. And I emailed you what Heather Cox Richardson, a letter from an American, after Defense Secretary Pete Hegseth and President Trump spoke to 800 nation's top military generals and admirals. And Heather Cox Richardson talked about the Housing Authority and that group, Housing Urban Development. But first, on September 25th, Defense Secretary Pete Hegseth suddenly announced was calling 800 of those people, generals, admirals, to the Marine Base in Virginia. In his speak, Hegseth reiterated his vision of military based in what he calls warrior ethos, ignoring the military's mission of preventing wars through deference. Its professional and highly educated officer corps, and its modern structure as a triumph of logistics, he told the military leaders that today was liberation of America's warriors in name, in deed, and in authorities. You will kill and break things for a living. You are not politically, you are not politically correct, and don't necessarily belong always in a polite society. That's our secretary of war, or as he wants to call it, instead of defense. Further, in the attached letter that I emailed to you, Richardson said, although the Hatch Act prohibits the use of government resources for partisan gain, the White House ignored the act to blame Democrats for the shutdown. Website for the Department of Housing and Urban Development, which we just listened to, showed a banner reading, "The radical left are going to shut down the government and inflict massive pain on the American people unless they get their 1.5 trillion wish lists of demands. The Trump administration wants to keep the government open for the American people." That is not true. They want to implement Project 2025. Trump denied that, but now he's totally wants to support that. So I'm asking you, and anybody in the audience, anybody that cares, please do everything you can as the Housing Authority of Washington County, to keep programs functioning for the residents of Washington County. And boy, we are, should be proud of our Housing Authority in Washington County. Another document is two HUD civil rights lawyers dismissed after raising concerns about Fair Housing Act enforcement. This was September 29th. Two government civil rights lawyers who spoke out about the Trump administration's efforts to limit enforcement of the Fair Housing Act were removed from their posts on Monday, September the 29th. The lawyers, Eman and Obde, I'm not saying it right, said they were escorted out of the Housing Urban Development Department by administrative staff. Terrible, but that's what our administration is currently doing. And it goes on of the problem of Trump taking over and demolishing our democracy. How the shutdown is affecting federal services and workers. Environmental Protection Agency, they had a total of 15,000 about employees, furloughed 13,000, 89% of them are gone. Housing, I could go on with the rest of these, but Housing Urban Development, current employees 6,000, furloughed about 4,571% gone. We have a major, and I'm glad our county administrator's going to be talking about 11 o'clock with other people in the county. We are in serious trouble. Keep doing your good work as Housing Authority and Commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Feig.
Is there any other member in the auditorium that wish to provide public comment on any Housing Authority-related item for up to five minutes? Raise your hand, start coming forward. Not seen in the room. Would any member online wish to provide public comment to the Housing Authority for up to five minutes? Give you just a moment to utilize the raise hand function. Not seen any hands. Director Harrington.
Thank you, Clerk Moss. Next on our agenda is Board of Directors announcements. I would like to announce that we will likely, at this juncture, not be having a November Housing Authority Board of Directors meeting. So we'll see you back here in December. Any other board announcements? All right. Well, with that, I'd like a motion to adjourn the Housing Authority Board of Directors meeting for this day, Tuesday, October 7th, 2025.
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Directors. Any opposed? We hereby adjourn the Housing Authority Board of Directors. You finally got your message. You finally got your message.
Yeah, that's true. I was starting.
All right, everyone. Okay, everybody, we're going to get started with... Good morning, everyone.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners, and over to you, Chair Harrington.
Welcome, everyone, to the regular business meeting of the Board of Commissioners for Washington County and the Board of Directors for Clean Water Services. Clerk Moss, could you do us the formal honors, please?
Certainly, Chair Harrington. Washington County Board of Commissioners, also meeting as the Board Directors for Clean Water Services and all other county service districts, is meeting this regular session, October 7th, 2025. Commissioner Phi?
Present.
Commissioner Willey?
Here.
Commissioner Schneider?
Here.
Vice Chair Trees?
Here.
Chair Harrington?
Here. Would you all please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you, everyone. Before we move to our first public communication opportunity for today's meeting, I would like to ensure that everyone here has the benefit of some public information. First, with regard to the Cornell Road Transitional Housing Opportunity, we have an upcoming informational meeting on Tuesday, October 14th. It is being hosted through the CPO One, Community Participation Organization. It is a Zoom meeting, and you can find all those logistics on the county website if you go to washingtoncountyor.gov and either look at our county calendar or search for Transitional Housing. You will come to a great informational page. But we have been receiving quite a bit of community communication, so I want to ensure everyone has the opportunity of this known information. This location will serve as recovery transitional housing, which means program participants will have already been connected to recovery treatment before they move in, and program participants will have specifically opted into a sober living environment. Maintaining sobriety will be a requirement for staying at the Cornell Road Recovery Housing. Planning for this big undertaking requires both, is needed, both for renovation of the hotel itself, for programmatic determinations, and for community engagement with nearby neighbors. Part of that community engagement will include developing a neighborhood plan, also referred to as, by some, as a good neighbor agreement, in partnership with nearby neighbors and the shelter operator. We've been hearing several different types of concerns from community members about safety regarding this program. First, we want to make sure it's very well-known that classification three and most classification two sex offenders are already prohibited from living near parks, schools, and childcare locations, which includes this future transitional housing location. Enforcement of this law is completed by parole officers, which Level III sex offenders are required to meet with on a regular basis, to confirm compliance of their dwelling with all applicable local laws. Like other emergency shelters and affordable housing sites, we will partner with our community corrections department, specific to applicable criminal history. Furthermore, we ensure safety in our programs by partnering with a service provider who will provide staffing onsite 24 hours a day, seven days a week, to confirm all safety protocols are followed. On-site staff will also coordinate with nearby neighbors should any safety concerns arise. Shelter operators are required to report any criminal behavior to the Washington County Sheriff's Office, and work closely with law enforcement to minimize the impact of any potential criminal activity involving residents or the surrounding neighborhood. People in recovery face barriers to accessing housing. That is why we make programs as accessible to community members who need these services as possible. We do not use background checks to limit access to our transitional housing programs, because it makes it harder for people to achieve their sobriety, and data does not demonstrate that background checks result in safer programs or better outcomes. So as I mentioned, our staff will be presenting at the virtual CPO One meeting on Tuesday, October 14th, from 7:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., to kick off our community engagement. We invite you to tune in and learn more about the program. And as I mentioned, we also have a website for further information. So that's that on the Cornell Road Transitional Housing. We've also been getting community input on the Portland Golf Club's proposed irrigation pond dredging. So I have an update for you on that. So the applicant, Portland Golf Club, is working through the permitting process with the Oregon Department of Environmental Quality, as well as other environmental agencies. We, on the Washington County side, are awaiting the review and documentation from DEQ. The Portland Golf Club has submitted its grading permit application. However, no permits will be issued until all state and local environmental reviews are complete. So that is in process by those other agencies. If DEQ classifies the material in the BO bags as solid waste, that would represent a significant change in this project. If there are significant changes in the project, then it wouldn't be able to move forward as conditionally approved. In that case, the applicant, the golf course, could consider submitting a new or modified land use application, which would be subject to a Type II review process. Due to community interest, our Land Use and Transportation Department would evaluate the application in a Type III process. That process will include public notice, opportunities for public comment, and a public hearing in front of the independent hearings officer. And to be clear, the Board of Commissioners has no role with regard to Type III applications. So just to bring you up to speed, and you can continue to get updates through our Land Use and Transportation Department, their website and communication vehicles. So now we're on to public comment. This is the first opportunity for members of our community to come and share their input on any topic for up to two minutes, an individual 10 minutes total. Clerk Moss, who do we have today?
Thank you, Chair Harrington. The first two we have is Ken Olyphant and Elizabeth Christensen.
Go ahead and start. Is that okay? Great. Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you, Chair Harrington, for your statement about the housing project. My name is Ken Olyphant, and I've been a Washington County resident since 2001. My wife and I are raising our three boys, ages six, 11, and 13, in the Oak Hills neighborhood, located less than 500 feet from the proposed Cornell Road Transitional Housing project. We moved to Oak Hills because it's truly one of a kind. Its 650 homes surround 40 acres of green space, which includes soccer fields, a baseball field, a rec center, a huge playground, and most importantly, it's full of kids. Our streets are alive with children biking in groups like it's the 1980s. Great time. My 13-year-old is constantly out with his friends. My 11-year-old spent the summer training on the soccer fields, and my six-year-old is eager for the same freedom his brothers enjoy. That's why I'm deeply concerned that the county has stated it will not exclude sex offenders or convicted violent felons from this facility. I urge, beg, and plead that you reconsider this decision. Our neighborhood's fabric will be irreparably harmed if we parents are forced to tell our kids they can no longer safely walk. we parents are forced to tell our kids they can no longer safely walk, play, or bike freely. In addition, Oak Hills Elementary, about 500 children, sits in the center of our neighborhood, only half a mile from the facility. St. Stephen's Academy, which has 139 students, is even closer. It's 500 feet away from the, the project. Oak Hills Christian Preschool has 70 students. The Prince of Peace School has 63 students, Terralinda, 288, and Sunset High School, 1,925 children. Excuse me, they're all within three-quarters of a mile of this facility. That's almost 3,000 children within 4,000 feet of the housing project. The county's current zero barrier, pop, zero barrier policy jeopardizes community safety and erodes support and confidence in this project. Washington County can't provide necessary transitional housing without compromising the safety and well-being of children in the most vibrant, diverse, and family-centered neighborhood in the county. I appreciate your time, and I also included a map, just kind of showing the, the surrounding area.
On Saturday, November 1st, the Oregon Rural Urban Project of Braver Angels will hold an information gathering town hall at Cedar Mill Library from 10:15 to 12:15. Launched in 2016, Braver Angels is a nonprofit bipartisan citizens movement to unify America. By bringing red and blue Americans together into a working alliance, Braver Angels is building new ways to talk to one another, participate together in public life, and influence the direction of the nation. Recent polls show that a majority of Americans feel our country is more divided than ever and increasingly view members of the opposite political party as not just wrong, but bad people. By creating opportunities for meaningful discussions, Braver Angels works to dial down the heated rhetoric that gets in the way of real conversations and accurate understanding of our differences. The objective is not to push an agenda or change participants' minds, but rather to provide a safe place for deeper understanding. As part of Braver Angels' effort to reduce political polarization among Oregonians, our Rural Urban Project Town Hall brings Oregonians together to identify the issues dividing rural and urban residents. We encourage community leaders to attend the town halls, and especially encourage young adults to attend as they represent both the future of Oregon's rural and urban communities and our citizens' efforts to reduce the burdens of the rural-urban divide. We welcome all Oregonians of goodwill to join us on November 1st at the Cedar Mill Library for this town hall project. Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk Moss?
Next, we have Michael Alley.
My name is Michael Alley, and I have two subjects I'd like to cover. I classify them as food for thought, especially, I'd like to thank the Commission for this chance to speech because, as we know in America now, speech is money. Money is speech. First subject I've got to talk about is the battery plant in Helvetia, and I'd like to, just as food for thought here, notify that it is outside the urban growth boundary of the site they're choosing. My brother owns a property that is directly adjacent to it to the north, and I know that neighborhood, the, those people there are going to be subjected to quite a bit of problems in, in that he, he wants to sell his house, and I, I think that it's going to be very difficult for him to do that. One issue on there is spot zoning, which it sure seems to be. The other issue is the, the taking issue in that that neighborhood is, is losing value and has no compensation. They have no public water, they're on, not on sewer system, and I think they're being shorted. Second issue I'd like the Board to consider, the problem of noise pollution, and maybe in the future, we could have a, some sort of research and thinking on that, that line there. Noise pollution in general. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone on Zoom today, Clerk Moss?
All right. Any member viewing this via Zoom, would you like to probably comment for up to two minutes on any county-related topic? Give you just a moment to utilize raise hand function. We have one hand. Megan Hill. Megan, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Please go ahead for up to two minutes.
Hi, good morning, Chair Harrington, Commissioners and, and county staff. I am Megan Hill, and I serve as the President of Oak Hills Homeowners Association, representing more, representing not more, 650 households that are directly adjacent to this proposed Cornell Road Recovery Transitional Housing Project. I want to focus on one of the most serious miscommunications shared publicly by Washington County leadership and Chair Harrington, by you as well. Level III and most Level II sex offenders are already prohibited from living near schools, parks, and childcare centers. This is false. According to Oregon Revised Statutes 255-060-0009, titled "Residence Requirements for Certain Sex Offenders Upon Release From Custody," a sex offender classified as a sexually violent, dangerous offender, or predatory sex offender may not reside near locations where children are primary occupants or users. However, this, this prohibition applies to permanent housing and specifically excludes transitional housing. That the Oregon Revised Statute specifically excludes transitional housing. So, in other words, this legal restriction does not apply to transitional housing placements, which are defined in the rule, and furthermore, Section 3 of the same rule allows supervising parole or probation officers to grant exceptions even for permanent housing based on vague or subjective criteria, and that includes enhanced supervision, case management, or simply that quote-unquote "more suitable" housing will be arranged later. This means that high-risk offenders, including those classified as predatory or sexually violent, can be legally placed in this transitional housing, even near schools or parks, if a parole officer deems it's acceptable. The bottom line is there is no blanket restriction under, under Oregon law that prohibits these individuals from being housed near children in transitional housing. We, as the public, we have been led to believe that this could not happen, and in reality, it, it not only can happen, it's legally allowed under this rule.
Thank you, Ms. Hill.
All right. Madam Chair, that concludes today's public testimony for Part 1.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to public, excuse me, our consent agenda, which consists of 14 items. Two sets of minutes, two items from Clean Water Services, one item from Community Corrections, one item from Facilities, Fleet, and Parks, two items from IT, four items from Land Use and Transportation, one item from Housing Services, and one item from Health and Human Services. What are the wishes of the Board?
Move to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Before I call for that, I would like to provide some comment with regard to item number D5, the Community Corrections 2025 through 2027 Biennium Plan. It is a very informative document, and I want to ensure, and will be following up with all of our mayors and city councils in our area to help them learn about the vast array of work that our Community Corrections Department, that's our parole and probation employees, as well as other program staff, some of whom are located at our Community Corrections Center, provide to our community. I also want to thank the team for adding in the Community Corrections Center Pathways diagram to illustrate how our parole and probation officers, as well as the Community Corrections Center, are the recipients of clients, whether it's through local arrests, whether it's through the county jail, or through the state courts or the state prisons. We are here to ensure that there are, is a set of programs, as well as supervision, to try and restore people safely to living in our county, and this document brings a lot of information to light in that regard. We are, as an agency, reeling from state budget cuts to our Community Corrections Program, but nonetheless, our, our county staff continue to be dedicated to reducing, re-offending or recidivism is the, the lingo term, but making sure that our community benefits through helping individual people benefit from the supervision and the programs. So, job well done to Community Corrections Director Nate Gawi-Ran, to our team, and thank you to the county's local Public Safety Coordinating Council for also reviewing this document. So, with that, we have a motion and a second to adopt today's consent agenda. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Next, we'll move on to Boards and Commissions. We have two different ones to entertain appointments today. First, Assessment and Taxation is recommending the appointment of two candidates to the Property Value Appeals Board. They are Spencer Hatch and Judy Kellogg. What are the wishes of the Commission?
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero, and we thank those two for applying and joining the other three colleagues for this voluntary group who does their work in a very specific timeframe. Next, we're moving on to the Washington County Audit Committee, and we have a recommendation to appoint Ryan Tulketson and Megan Hall to the County Audit Committee. What are the wishes of the Commission?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to Proclamations, and today we have before us an opportunity to recognize and proclaim the full month of October, October 2025, as National Community Planning Month here in Washington County. So, we have various staff members from our Land Use and Transportation Department to speak more to this proclamation and to bring it to life. Thank you. Welcome.
Good morning, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. My name is Ann Elvers. I'm a senior planner for current planning.
My name's Peter Grine. I'm an associate planner with the Community Planning Division.
And my name's Miranda Seekins. I'm an associate planner with the Transportation Planning Group.
Okay. Let's begin. Whereas change is constant and affects all cities, towns, suburbs, counties, boroughs, townships, rural areas, and other places, community planning can help manage this change to provide better choices and more fair outcomes for people who live, work, and play in our communities. Ann?
Whereas community planning provides an opportunity for all people to be meaningfully involved in making choices that determine the future of their community. And whereas the full benefit of planning requires public officials and community members who understand, support, and demand excellence in planning and plan implementation. And whereas the month of October is designated as National Community Planning Month throughout the United States of America and its territories. Ann?
Whereas the American Planning Association endorses National Community Planning Month as an opportunity to highlight how planning is essential to healthy and sustainable communities, and how planners can lead communities to fair and resilient futures. And whereas the celebration of National Community Planning Month gives us the opportunity to publicly recognize the participation and dedication of professional planners, planning commissioners, and other community members who have contributed their time and expertise to the improvement of Washington County, and whereas we recognize their many valuable contributions, to extend our heartfelt thanks for their continued commitment to public service.
Now, therefore, be it resolved that on the seventh day of October 2025, the Washington County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim the month of October 2025 as Community Planning Month in Washington County.
Thank you. What are the wishes of the Commission?
Move to approve.
Second.
Are there any comments before I call the question?
That's my comment.
All righty. So, all those in favor of proclaiming October 2025 as National Community Planning Month, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. And another way that we help recognize these valuable contributions and extend our heartfelt thanks is to take a picture with you, so please join us in doing so. Because even though we've got great community outreach and communications, the, there are a lot of folks who are doing this tremendous work behind the scenes, so please join us.
Yeah. Just a big group picture. Yeah. Yeah, we're just going to line up, basically, kind of in a half circle if we can all be right, and here would be really great. We're going to need like a couple of layers.
One of the better pictures. Welcome here.
All right. We're going to have to kind of tighten it a little bit. We're going to have to come in like two feet on this right side. There's a space open in the middle. Perfect. All righty. We're going to need to tighten just a little bit more. Sorry, you guys. Thank you. All right. Perfect. Everyone can see me. All righty. One, two, three. Perfect. We got it. Thank you. Everybody. Watching my figure.
All righty. All righty. Now we roll up our sleeves to have a public hearing. So, oh, hello there, Mr. Shetler. Welcome. And I know you have a great staff report for us.
Thank you, Chair Harrington. It's quite brief. This is a pretty perfunctory item that comes before your Board today. Again, I'm Stacy Shetler, your county engineer with Land Use and Transportation. And in the city of Cornelius, we have a road, web road. It's shown on the map in the red dashed area there. The city of Cornelius has requested the transfer of this road. It's part of continuing development in Cornelius, and now it's completely within the city limits. This road is a rural local. It's not on the county's transportation system plan to be of county jurisdiction in, in the future. The road is being transferred to the city, therefore, all the public rights remain intact and will be maintained. So, notification has been made after the public hearing was set. As of this morning at like 8:35, there had been no calls to the county surveyor's office with any comments for or opposed.
Would any member in the auditorium wish to make a public comment on this public hearing? As you've heard from staff, just give a moment to raise hands, start coming forward. Not seeing any in the room. Would any member online wish to make a public comment on this public hearing? As you've heard the staff report, give you just a moment to utilize the raise hand function. Not seeing any hands. Chair Harrington.
And with that, I'd like to close today's public hearing and ask the board for a motion to approve the resolution in order to transfer the jurisdiction of a portion of southwest Webb Road to the city of Cornelius as documented.
I move to approve the transfer.
Second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Go ahead, Commissioner Willie.
Yeah, rumor has it that's gonna be renamed to Peter Brandon Boulevard. Is there any substance to that? I'm kidding, Stacy.
I have no information about that, Commissioner.
We'll refer all questions and comments to the city of Cornelius. He's doing a great job, though. We'll tell you that. Next, we'll move on to action items. The first one is brought to us by Clean Water Services. So, who am I turning this over to? Oh, hello.
Elizabeth Edwards, Chief of Staff.
Good morning, still. Clean Water Services Board of Directors for the record, Elizabeth Edwards, Chief of Staff with Clean Water Services. We are here before you to discuss the appointment of the interim chief executive officer and general manager. Okay, okay. We're getting excited. To begin with, just a timeline of where we've been. Our former CEO resigned effective June 6th. The board appointed Rick Shanley, the acting chief executive officer and general manager, on May 29th, effective June 6th, in Resolution in Order 25-7. And then, on September 16th, the board met in work session to discuss the process and criteria for interim appointment of chief executive officer and general manager. So, here are the criteria that the board discussed at the September 16th work session. Wanted to make sure that this was part of the public record and writing as you all look to take action. So, really getting toward the general maintaining and operations of this large and complex organization. And we list examples there, but I'm not gonna read everything off of the slide. And then, the action today, and we are correcting the first bullet to say commitment to a public recruitment process, just to make it abundantly clear and in alignment with the language actually in the Resolution in Order. So, that will be corrected. And the Resolution in Order will name the current acting CEO and general manager, Rick Shanley, to be the interim CEO and general manager in support of continuity of operations and the other criteria that the board discussed, and also to ensure market rate compensation for the interim retroactive to the acting tenure. So, with that, that's everything we had discussed also this morning at the work session. So, leave it to you all on what next steps you want to take.
Does the board have any questions or comments at this juncture? Go ahead, Commissioner Snyder.
I just wanna thank Mr. Shanley for helping to lead the organization through a challenging time and, I think, doing a great job of that on an interim basis. I look forward to having you continue in that role while we recruit a permanent general manager.
Anyone else? I think we all concur with that, as you heard in our work session. So, with that, I would like to ask the board to approve the resolution in order appointing Rick Shanley as the interim chief executive officer slash general manager of Clean Water Services and partially rescind Resolution and Order 25-7 as documented in the Resolution in Order before us today.
Move to adopt.
Second.
All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, directors. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Thank you for your support, Ms. Edwards. Next, we'll move on to our section, our second action item for today, to adopt the principles of the library service boundaries and funding allocation methodology for the Washington County Cooperative Library Services Partners for Partner Consideration. Welcome, Ms. Tattersall.
Good morning, Chair Harrington and board. I'm Lisa Tattersall, manager of Washington County Cooperative Library Services, here today to follow up on some recent board conversations, most recently September 23rd and October 2nd, to, as you said, Chair, adopt the principles of the library service boundaries and funding allocation methodology for our partner consideration. Just a quick review again, just for the benefit of the public, these are a list of our board touchpoints to date on this process with links to all of the work session items. And then, also just to remind our community members of the board's supported process goals, I won't read through them all, but just including them in the packet here for reference. All right. So, I wanted to just quickly review the service boundary principles. And I've linked in the slides the full, very full amount of documentation provided at your September 23rd and October 2nd meetings. So, the service boundaries were drawn by considering municipal boundaries, the proximity to library location by travel time. That was data informed and considered a best practice. We also looked at agreement between partners for areas that could have been assigned to multiple nearby libraries. We also resolved small areas where the voter precinct base unit that we use conflicted with urban planning area agreements or UPAAs, and that created some map oddities. And so, we updated those to reflect the UPA. The intergovernmental agreements will include clarity on potential annexations in the future, and I've got that language listed on the slide above. The next slide just shows the cleaned up map, cleaning up those map oddities. And there's a full PDF of the map attached to the packet for this item if community wants to check that out. Okay. And now, this slide reviews the funding allocation methodology principles. There are more details graphic outlining the base methodology on the next slide, but some principles include that city partners may use their funding allocations to offset administrative costs for library operations if base service levels are met. Nonprofit partners would receive a square foot allowance per, for their leased space to support their facility costs. Should there be a net percentage increase in revenue from the local option levy and the general fund transfer, this percentage increase would be distributed to partners. The board may choose to determine a cap on that percentage increase as part of the forthcoming IGA conversations. Should there be a net percentage decrease in revenue from the local option levy and the general fund transfer, this percentage decrease would be applied to partners. And on the next slide, we have a graphic outlining the methodology and showing the relationship between population and funding. When we looked at applying the methodology purely, it created some challenges. And so, we looked at taking your board's direction from June 10th, guideposts for our funding implementation strategies. And so, those implementation strategies are as follows, that each partner sees at least a 5% increase on their fiscal year '25-'26 allocation amount in the, for the proposed amount in '26-'27. We would focus on a three-month fund balance target for WCCLS. This balances supporting funding allocations while also keeping in mind our cash flow considerations and our county's responsibility for emergencies. We would adjust the first-year allocations to support sustainable growth in service over time for Aloha and Forest Grove. And at the same rate of percentage increase for all partners would be applied across the levy cycle should revenue come in sufficiently. This table reflects a combination of the allocation methodology with the implementation strategies on top. The proposed fiscal year '26-'27 amount, allocation amount, excuse me, represents each partner's new base of funding for the levy cycle through June 2031. Since there's been a little bit of recent attention on this, I just wanted to briefly highlight centralized collections. This is something that your board reviewed at the February 4th work session. And the purpose of this is to really support the long-term sustainability and efficiency of library service for our communities. It's not an easy transition to undertake, but as careful stewards of public resources, this is an important public operational shift that will support cooperative efficiency and libraries' ability to keep showing up for their community in the ways that they need. Some partners may need to reduce positions, such as through attrition. Others may need to direct, redirect those staff to other service priorities. We are not implementing until July 2027 to allow partners time to thoughtfully manage any staffing transitions that they choose to make. All libraries' cost to provide service will be reduced because they will no longer need to direct FTE to collections work, and they will no longer have to spend funds on collection materials. How much the savings are locally and how they are realized is up to each partner in our model where operational autonomy is an important value for the libraries. And so, this next slide just shows the same funding allocation from a few slides back along with, it highlights the '23-'24 expenditures on local collections. And so, those are an estimate of what libraries would save on collection expenditures. I do not include FTE because that is a local decision. Okay. And with that, does your board wish to adopt the principles of the library service boundaries and funding allocation methodology for partner consideration? Should your board adopt these principles, staff would bring these principles to our nine city and three nonprofit partners for consideration, and then would return to your board with the cooperative recommendation.
First, are there any questions of the commissioners? Okay. Go ahead.
I'd like to make a comment about this, and thank you very much for the presentation. Thank you for your work. This has been a long process. I also wanted to tie, just to make the point that we tie Slide 10 to the budget in the WCCLS, thirty, in that, in those budget numbers. I think that that's an important concept here. So, thank you again, and I appreciate the work. This has been a long process with all of the cooperatives involved. So, thank you.
I'd like to make sure the floor is open to all commissioners for comments, not just questions. Go ahead, Commissioner Snyder.
Thank you. Lisa, thank you for the presentation and the work that's been done by actually a large group of people, both part of our city partners and nonprofits and many county staff, even some who joined the team recently and had to do some new mapping exercises. I think we got to a very thoughtful place, and not everyone loves it, but I believe most everyone can live with it. And ultimately, that is, you know, I think that probably in this circumstance, the best that we can get to balancing a lot of competing interests and a very challenging financial environment. So, thank you, and I am ready to move forward.
Any other comments?
Lisa, thank you for your hard work. It's been quite a journey and a long journey to get here. I am in support of the action in front of the board this morning. And one thing I want to make sure, two things, I guess, that I want to make sure that is clear moving forward, one of the verbiage in terms of the intergovernmental agreements, there is, the last sentence says service transition between nonprofit library to city libraries will be supported by the county. I think it's a bit nuanced, and I think to me, it's sort of unclear what that means. Because, for example, Bethany and Cedar Mill or Garden Homes or the Aloha Library are nonprofits. For example, I'll just call out Aloha Library is a nonprofit library. If that were to transition, it, the, it's complex, right? So, I think that that last sentence is a bit confusing. So, I think we need to make sure that what are we trying to say? What message are we conveying in that last sentence? And, and what are the unintended consequences that could come out of that? So, I just want to preface that and say that for the record, that when we do go into the intermental, intergovernmental agreements, I think that last sentence needs to be abundantly clear, that we're not, because I don't see how any of the library, the nonprofit libraries that I called out, could transition to CD light, service library without having a whole annexation process under. So, I don't, so I'm just unclear. So, I want to just put a pin to that. When we do come back to that, I will be looking forward to fully understand and make sure that, that understanding also is extended to the community members and everyone. And then, the last thing I will say, I was, there's been a lot of conversations about this, especially the, the collection side of it and centralizing and standardizing, to be honest. I think there is a bit of an appetite to keep local flavor, local flavor. And I see that there, the conversation isn't closed, but keep listening, keep hearing, and keep improving, because this is a process improvement, and there are always a room to improve. And I appreciate, I have not heard from the county side when we talk about that specific element of the library is, I have not heard that it's one size fits all. And I want to make sure that we uplift that and we elevate that point. Thank you.
Yeah, Lisa, you have done a lot of work on this. I think it needs to be really emphasized that new funding allocation will certainly enhance our smaller libraries to have funding available to them to improve the services that they're gonna provide to their small communities. And I think that's, that was the biggest driver for me. It was very important that that happens. And certainly, your work on centralizing the collections, you know, with the monetary savings that is gonna be recognized, that we have to do that as a part of the increase in the levy. So, I'm glad that those are going hand in hand. So, thanks for your work on this.
Thank you. I will close up with comments. Hats off to you, Lisa, to you, Marnie Kyle, and to all of the partner staff for taking on an ambitious review and working together very diligently since early 2023 to take a look at everything and figure out how, for the first time in over 10 years, we look at the cooperative system and the funding for that cooperative system as we move forward with a different look of our community than we have had in the past. I'm really proud of how our community has supported libraries, public libraries, for over 20 years, and I hope that they will continue to do so. Slide nine makes it abundantly clear that this proposed methodology is upside for every single public library and that no one is in the red, so to speak. And there have been a lot of confusing statements made by local elected officials towards that end lately. And I think it diminishes the credibility that the full cooperative has with our public. I hope that our public will continue to stand with us in funding our cooperative system through the November 4- I'm really proud of how our community has supported libraries, public libraries, for over 20 years, and I hope that they will continue to do so. Slide 9 makes it abundantly clear that this proposed methodology is upside for every single public library and that no one is in the red, so to speak. And there have been a lot of confusing statements made by local elected officials towards that end lately, and I think it diminishes the credibility that the full cooperative has with our public. I hope that our public will continue to stand with us in funding our cooperative system through the November 4th ballot, and I encourage all of our community members to please take a look at your voter's pamphlet that is provided by the county, which should be landing in our mailboxes in the next week or so. Thank you again to our team for all of the creative problem solving. I think I can speak on behalf of my colleagues, especially to Vice Chair, Commissioner Pam Treese, and Commissioner Jerry Willey, who served as our board liaisons for this project. I never imagined you would have had so many in-depth conversations that you have had and the numerous proposals that you considered and helped shape before coming to the Board of Commissioners, and I'm deeply grateful for that work. So with that, I would like to call for a motion to adopt the principles of the library service boundaries and funding allocation methodology for the Washington County Cooperative Library Services Partner Consideration.
Move for adoption.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero, and onward it goes to our partners, and we've done our best to be as abundantly clear and supportive of the continued work together. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to the end of the action items, and we're next going to move forward to our second public communication opportunity for our community. We have seven members who have signed up in advance, and we are going to afford you the, all seven of you, the opportunity for five minutes per individual. Clerk Moss, who do we have up next?
First, we have Bob Seward and Dale Feek.
Thank you for the opportunity to make my argument before you today. The problem we have is people are getting a lot of misinformation, disinformation about vaccinations. What kind of information should they trust? My point today is only trust the arguments that are based on science. Give you an example. In March of 2020, 74 journalism professors accused Fox News of spreading coronavirus misinformation. They specifically mentioned Hannity and Tucker. Now, a lot of people watch Fox News. It's very convincing, and unfortunately, a lot of people listened to that. They had doubts about the vaccinations. Thousands of people didn't go in and get their vaccinations, and those thousands of people died. Another source of information, the opposite, is science-based observation. This was a paper sent to Senator Wyden and other senators from the Yale School of Medicine. They claimed that if the Medicaid cuts go ahead, 51,000 deaths will occur. That sounds kind of extreme, but it's based on science, so I believe it. My name's Robert Seward. I'm a retired physician. I live in Forest Grove, 40 years in patient care. I'm board certified in internal medicine. Four years in medical school, four years of training after that, took my boards, and all that time, I was learning medical science. If any, if I, and I was in practice all those years, if I was successful, it wasn't because I was brilliant, it was because I did what my instructors told me to do, be science, you know, honor the medical science. I also believe in medical science because of my own personal experiences. I had an appendectomy age 13. I had bypass at age 46. I had a pacemaker at age 81. And then I had an interesting experience with a swollen ankle in 1996. I was walking a lot. My ankle blew up, and I went to an orthopedic surgeon. He said, "You need ankle fusion." I said, "What's that?" "They go in and they wire your bones together." I said, "I don't like that. I'm going to get a second opinion." So I did. I was 200 miles south of Mayo Clinic. I drove up there. The Mayo specialist looked at me. He said, "How you doing?" I said, "As long as I wear this orthotic." And he says, "You don't need surgery. We're not recommending it." I said, "Wow, I like this place." So I started going there as a, as a, as a patient, and I learned a lot from the Mayo Clinic. It was started in 1883 by Charlie Mayo, and then his two sons took over, and it's now one of the most prestigious clinics in the world. They had two rules for all their trainees, two rules. One, you are 100% committed to your patients. Rule two, you are 100% committed to medical science. So, what are the reliable sources of medical information? Mayo Clinic, Cleveland Clinic, you can go in there, and all the medical schools, OHSU, University of Washington, medical societies like the American College of Physicians, American Academy of Pediatrics, your state health departments, with one proviso, not in Florida, but we have, our, our state departments are reliable. Health and Human Services used to be reliable, and now as director is a psychopath. One of the most important sources of information are nurses. The American Nursing Association, you can go onto their website, they are reliable. I was in practice all these years. I never met a nurse that lied to me. They all had integrity. I can't say that about physicians. I have five physicians or medical professionals that were sociopathic. And then the last thing I'd like to say is, do your own research today. Go into Google. Go to the American Nursing Association. Go to your medical school websites. Talk to your physician. Most of your physicians are going to give you valid information.
Thank you, Mr. Seward. We need to wrap up.
That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Feek, you're up next.
Madam Chair Harrington, Commissioners, I actually forgot I was going to make a second public comment until you called my name, Clerk Moss, but I'm prepared. I just enjoy listening to Bob Seward, Dr. Bob Seward. He's a close personal friend, a lot of integrity, and a lot of wise. He's older and wise. Some people can be old and not wise, maybe that's me sometimes, but I appreciate his wisdom that he gives to you and to me. I sent an email to you. I guess I did, yeah. And I sent it to three mayors also. And I end it with, "From justice and freedom, discussion and criticism, intelligence and character, these are indispensable ingredients of a democratic state. We can be rich and powerful without them, but not for long." It's Robert Hutchins who helped start the Great Books Program with Mortimer J. Adler back in the 1940s. Well, I came back from Seattle visiting my brother, and I, my wife wasn't home, she was taking a vacation, so I drove down to, I got the ICE address in Portland because in Seattle Times, it was a Portland, but it was an article about Portland and the problem we have in ICE in Portland. And I thought it was downtown Portland. Hey, it's not downtown Portland. It's over by the waterfront, Oregon Hill Science University, one block. I took pictures of what was going on. I took a video clip of how they operate down there. It was amazing to me. I learned from personal experience for only an hour and a half, but it was pretty good experience of watching what they do there. And Ron Wyden is correct. What President Trump wants to do is create an insurrection act, provoke people to lose their cool and start fighting each other so they can get on public TV and radio. We got to make sure people keep their cool. Anyway, Representative Susan McLean in her newsletter, and that's what you have in front of you, we're lucky to have Representative Susan McLean, a former debate and speech coach of over 40 years. She knows what she's doing. Anyway, she, what you have in front of you is what Dan Rayfield said, our Attorney General. What just happened to National Guard in Oregon, Sunday, 9:28, Saturday, 10:04, Sunday, 10:05? What's next? Take a look at that. The Oregon Republican Party used a doctored photo on its social media accounts to make it look like Portland was burning. And then there's the Guardian in the pictures. And in the second page you have there, there's the picture that's been documented, doctored up. And it turns out that the, the people there are pictures from different South American nearly a decade ago. That's just crazy. That's what people are starting to believe, though, if they look at that stuff. Republicans post fake image of Oregon protest using photos of South Africa, South America. And I watched what was going on there myself. And I, I went right up to as far as I could get, close to the gates that were open when the cars went through and the, some of the police and some of the military backed off, let those cars go in, but it was all calm. No fire in Portland, two miles south of Portland, in a one-block area. It just wants to be a created, big major conflict so you can end up doing what I say at the end of this. Well, Susan McLean, please read what Susan McLean says here, too, because she co-chaired Bill, H.Bill 2299, had him do a fake news related to, related to people that have been abused. And I'm saying, Susan McLean, Representative Susan McLean, "Please sponsor and author a bill to address fake images that portray inaccurate misleading propaganda that creates the opportunity for Donald Trump to declare a national insurrection so he can continue to create a military coup of police state." And as all of you, except for you, Commissioner Willey, because she didn't want the book, got the book On Tyranny by Timothy Snyder, and we don't want paramilitary in our country, but that's what's happening right now. And we all need to stand up to that and take a stand and say, "We don't want it. Keep it out of here." And I'm glad that we haven't. We have general counsel here that understands what's going on. We have a county minister that's doing what's going on. She's not here because she's addressing this in a meeting. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Feek. Clerk Moss, who do we have next?
Next, we have Jill Latre and Karen Schmidlin.
My name is Jill Latre, and I've been a resident of Washington County for over 30 years. The Oregon Secretary of State, Tobias Reed, co-authored an opinion piece in the Oregonian published September 17th. This article assures us that our election system is secure. I will be focusing on one claim. Bipartisan observers oversee the counting process from start to finish. For years, I have been an observer at the Washington County Elections Office. I have spent multiple hours and days observing elections, the public logic and accuracy test, a risk-limiting audit, which only recently began taking place at our election office. I have toured the office multiple times and viewed election material and documents, some through public records requests, which incur a fee. I was also an observer at the previous election office. That building was much smaller, but observers were allowed to be seated in front of each process. My experience in the current Washington County Election Office is observers do not oversee the counting process start to finish. In fact, observers cannot observe any process start to finish. As has been reported before, observers are kept in a room away from the processes. Observers view monitors from multiple cameras and computer stations around some areas of the election office. Four camera views are projected on one monitor. Sometimes two or three of the views are from the same camera. Each view lasts 15 to 20 seconds and then switches to another view. Three to four minutes pass before the same view is shown again. Cameras have low resolution. The image is in black and white. There is no timestamp, and the cameras are placed far from the activity. All areas that are handling ballots do not have video surveillance, and no sound is transmitted. When viewing the room with rows of computer stations used for signature verification and adjudication, it's difficult to distinguish between a person and a chair the further the station is from the camera. In the board's room, it's difficult to count the number of batch boxes stacked on the ballots. Imagine watching a particular process on a monitor that's taking place in another room wearing sound-canceling headphones, and for 75% of the time, you're blindfolded. It's extremely frustrating. In the observation room, signature verification and adjudication are projected on other monitors. Observers have experienced times when the monitors are not operational for hours or days, and often more computer stations are being utilized than are being transmitted to the observer room. There are elections that only perform manual signature verification. In these cases, no one can observe any of the process as it's not projected into the observation room. Observers have no visibility whatsoever to the ballot duplication process or to the Yuakava ballot receipt and duplication. During the January 21st, 2025 work session, Chair Harrington asked election manager Dan Forrester what the state looks for or requires in terms of monitoring elections. Mr. Forrester replied, "The state doesn't mandate or have guidelines on this topic," and later referred to a statute that allows observation that doesn't impede orderly operations. However, ORS 254.482 states, "The county clerk, if requested, shall permit authorized persons to be at the office of the county clerk to watch the receiving and counting of votes." The Vote by Mail Procedure Manual states, "Members of the public may observe all ballot processes, except confidential election processes, such as challenge ballot process." I'll say that again. "May observe all ballot processes." While attending public tests where observers are allowed to be in the tabulation boardroom, I have witnessed many situations where if I were observing from the observation room, I would have no idea that errors were occurring. Without in-person observation, all I would have seen were election workers scanning ballots and comparing results. For example, during the 2024 King City Public Test, one tabulator incorrectly counted the votes. During the 2024 primary, the test results did not match the control results, and after several attempts of scanning, deleting, and re-scanning, ultimately, to get the control and the test results to match, the control group was deleted and a new control group was created that day. Washington County, please comply with this statute. Observers need to be able to observe all ballot processes as stated in the statute and by our Secretary of State, Tobias Reed. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Schmidlin.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I'm Karen Schmidlin, a resident of Washington County. During the board meeting on Tuesday, September 16th, we brought to your attention that Secretary of State Tobias Reed had proudly announced during a press conference that due to voter privacy concerns, he was refusing to provide a copy of Oregon's voter rolls to the federal government. Amazingly, on that very same day, the U.S. Department of Justice, the DOJ, filed a lawsuit against Oregon and Maine and their respective Secretaries of State for noncompliance with federal law with respect to this issue. And other states have been added since then, because that was a couple weeks ago. This is the DOJ press release, and see the press release, it's on the other side of your page. page. The Justice Department sues Oregon and Maine for failure to provide voter registration rolls Tuesday, September sixteenth, twenty-twenty-five for immediate release. Office of Public Affairs. Today, the Department of Justice Civil Rights Division sued the states of Oregon and Maine and their respective Secretaries of State for failing to provide information regarding voter list maintenance procedures and electronic copies of statewide voter registration lists. Quote, "States simply cannot pick and choose which federal laws they will comply with, including our voting role, voting laws, which ensure that all American citizens have equal access to the ballot in federal elections," unquote, said Assistant Attorney General Harmeet K. Dillon of the Justice Department's Civil Rights Division. Quote, "American citizens have a right to feel confident in the integrity of our electoral process and the refusal of certain states to protect their citizens against vote dilution will result in legal consequences," unquote. The lawsuit against Oregon alleges that Oregon and its Secretary of State Tobias Reed violated the National Voter Registration Act, the NVRA, the Help America Vote Act, HAVA, and the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty, CRA, by refusing to produce the current unredacted electronic copy of the state's voter registration list to provide information on the state's voter list maintenance program and to disclose registration information for any eligible voters. The lawsuit against Maine alleges that Maine and its Secretary of State Shenabellows violated the NVRA, the HAVA, and the CRA by refusing to provide data regarding the removal of ineligible individuals and to produce an unredacted, computerized state voter registration list. Yet, both states gave identical information requested by the Justice Department to a private organization. And this was updated on September seventeenth. The last line in the press release supports exactly what we reported a couple of weeks ago. Oregon is giving this very same data to a private nonprofit over which there is virtually no oversight. As we reported in another previous testimony, the private nonprofit that holds Oregon's and Maine's voter rolls is the Electronic Registration Information Center, otherwise known as ERIC. This organization was funded initially by George Soros's Open Society Foundation via Pew Charitable Trusts. So is our Secretary of State saying that this nonprofit is more trustworthy than the federal government? I mean, that seems unlikely, but what is the logical answer here? It doesn't make sense. Let us also not forget that the Oregon DMV was hacked in twenty twenty-four, so we, the people, have no idea who has our private information, including images of our signatures. That's what was hacked. No, this isn't about our privacy. In my opinion, it's about the Secretary of State hiding the truth of the disastrous state of our voter rolls and the number of ineligible voters therein. As leaders in Washington County, you have chosen to defer all responsibility for our elections to the state. It's obvious from this and several other lawsuits that the state is mismanaging our voter rolls and our elections are untrustworthy. Is it, it is incumbent upon you to take action on behalf of our county. As informed leaders, you have the duty and the ability to bring management of our voter rolls and elections back to Washington County to be managed locally. Another election is around the corner, and we would be happy to help with this in any way. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schmidlin. Clerk Moss, who's next?
Next, we have Roger Law and Melissa Laird.
Good afternoon, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. My name is Roger W. Law and I'm a forty-year resident of Washington County. You've just heard testimony regarding the lawsuit filed on September sixteenth, twenty-twenty-five by the U.S. Department of Justice against Oregon and Maine. On September twenty-fifth, six more states were added for failure to produce their statewide voter registration lists upon request, California, Michigan, Minnesota, New York, New Hampshire, and Pennsylvania. U.S. Attorney General Pam Bondi stated, clean voter rolls are the foundation of free and fair elections. Every state has a responsibility to ensure that voter registration records are accurate, accessible, and secure. States that don't fulfill that obligation will see this Department of Justice in court. Oregon Secretary of State Tobias Reed posted responses to the lawsuit on X and Facebook and co-authored an opinion piece for The Oregonian. He stated, "Our system of elections should be about trust, security, and making every lawful vote count, and I took an oath to protect Oregonian's rights and privacy." This is misleading. As Secretary of State, he surely knows that Oregon is providing the same information to ERIC, the Electronic Registration Information Center. Several people responded to Mr. Reed's posts expressing thanks and encouragement to him for protecting Oregon, Oregonian's private information. With these comments change, if Mr. Reed's statement stated the truth, their personal data has already been handed over to ERIC without permission. Many others, however, expressed some of the same concerns we have presented to this board, such as, what about the data breach from DMV? They weren't too worried about protecting our information then, and guess what? They already have all our information, so what are they trying to hide? Next. Define data, private data. If they're trying to conduct an audit to confirm that all votes are valid, I don't have a problem with that. Next. Don't you want fair elections? Next. Elections should be about verification, not trust. Next. Back your defense of vote by mail with proof, not just words. Prove that it is trustworthy, safe, and secure. Your rejection to the feds' request for voter rolls that tells me none of the above is true. Next. We should have fair and honest elections, not corrupt vote by mail. Vote by mail is called requesting an absentee ballot, and stop with automatic registration. Responsibilities will register themselves. Next. No, it's not working. That's why people want the vote by mail, that's why people want the voter rolls cleaned and we want to get rid of vote by mail. In-person voting with absentee ballots available is the best way. Why are you afraid of in-person voting? Next. Laughing out loud, you've lost trust because your system isn't trustworthy. Vote by mail has been banned in many countries because of this. Next. Please explain to me if I'm wrong about vote by mail, that there's no transparency? People are registered to vote at DMV when they are, when they get a driver's license and licenses are issued to non-citizens. The DOJ is suing Oregon to view the voter rolls. What's to hide? Next. I personally know people who have moved out of state who, after twelve years, still get their ballots. Next. Let's see. We had more voters registered than we had people over the age of eighteen in twenty-twenty. The numbers are there. I've looked at it. All of a sudden, the numbers changed the other day, but I have the original screenshots. How is it you have more voters registered than you have people in the age of eighteen, by almost five hundred thousand? How does that happen? Next. I guarantee you, our data is safer with the federal, federal government than with the state. You people aren't, can't even manage to maintain our roads, let alone make sure our data is secure. Next. You're trying to hide fake voters. Give the feds what they want. There should be nothing to hide. Oregon's, Oregon computer systems have been hacked so many times that all our personal data is on the dark web anyway. Feds just want our voter rolls. Next. I'm okay with the reasons that you are resisting handing that information over, but I also expect you to form an audit within our own Department of Voter Rolls so they, being clean, can be confirmed by you. I'm confident that if you audit it, you will find many things that need to be addressed or fixed. Next. It's about secure, fair elections. When was the last time you purged your voter rolls? If you really want to help people in Oregon, drop mail-in voting, except for absentee, and require it in, require in-person, paper ballot, ID-required voting. Next. Comply with federal election law. Next. Clean up the voter rolls. Next. Voting time is November fifth, not the whole damn month. Next. We want ID-required to vote, but when you won't support that because cheating the election and subverting our vote is tougher to do with voter ID. Wrapping up, many people are concerned about our current election system. We request again that Washington County bring our voter rolls and elections back under local control. We are available to assist. Let's clean the voter rolls, have Election Day, in-person voting on paper ballots with limited absentee voting at the precinct with ID, hand-counted, and same-day results. Thank you for listening to the Spirit of Truth speak to me.
Thank you, Mr. Law. Ms. Laird, please go ahead.
Thank you. Hi, Washington County Board of Commissioners. For the record, my name is Melissa Laird, and I have been a Washington County resident for over forty years. I live in Skyview, an eighty-eight-home subdivision in unincorporated Washington County that is only zero-point-two miles from the Cornell Road Recovery Transitional Housing Project. That's one thousand and fifty-six feet. With no outlet from within the neighborhood and a THPRD park located at its entrance, Skyview attracts families. In twenty fourteen, the Bethany Road widening project included bike lanes and sidewalks, allowing the kids a safe path to Oak Hills Elementary School, but also eliminated the school bus routes. Frequently, you see kids walking or biking to play in the park, to go to school, or just hang out with their friends. The park has also become a place for young families to meet, have playdates for their toddlers, and catch up with each other's lives. Now, I understand the need for transitional housing for people to work through their recovery, and I do want the Cornell Road facility and its residents to succeed. However, this must be done with no compromises to the safety and security of the neighborhoods that surround the facility. This must include no residents with violent or sex crime offenses, a good neighbor agreement that has been collaboratively developed and includes strict accountable procedures for removing individuals who violate the rules, and a twenty-four-by-seven onsite professional security presence with a direct role by the law enforcement in incident responses. Over the past several years, the area around Cornell Road, the area around the Cornell Road Recovery site has become a concern, and please look at the map that I provided you. The concerns include homeless camping on the Cornell Frontage Road green space, loitering around the entrance to the Oak Hills neighborhood, random cars and RVs parked along Bronson Road, and an occasional homeless sleeping in the Skyview Park. A dedicated group of neighbors remain vigilant here, immediately engaging law enforcement when an incident occurs, which can be complicated by the multiple jurisdictions who need to be called. So if you look at the coloring on your map, sometimes it's the Beaverton Police that are responsible for that jurisdiction, sometimes it's the sheriff's office. The housing of seventy-five to eighty-five individuals in recovery must not compound these issues, and in fact, it can help if the Cornell Road Recovery has the opportunity to state their goal as making the area safer than it is today, which would clearly support the neighbors, would clearly win support of the neighbors and be a positive outcome for everyone involved. Thank you for your attention and your time.
Thank you, Ms. Laird. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone else?
That concludes it. The other commenter is not in the auditorium.
Okay. Nor on Zoom. Thank you, Clerk Moss. With that, we will move then to board announcements. This Friday, October tenth, we'll be having a long day as the Clean Water Services Board of Directors in work session, and you can see the notice for that also in our packet. Next Tuesday, October fourteenth, will be a work session-only day, starting at nine a.m. On Tuesday, October twenty-first, we'll start with our work session at nine, pause that, and have our business meeting at ten, and then we'll reconvene in work session. On Tuesday, October twenty-eighth, we'll have an afternoon work session and an evening board meeting at six-thirty p.m. Then we're on to the month of November. Tuesday, November fourth, we'll have our work session start at nine, we'll pause that, and then at ten o'clock, go to our board meeting. On Thursday, November sixth, we'll have a Washington County Board of Commissioners Round Table, starting at nine a.m. And on Friday, November seventh, we'll have a Clean Water Services Board of Directors Work Session, starting at nine. Tuesday, November eleventh, is Veterans Day, a federal holiday, so we won't be meeting that day. And as such, on Tuesday, November eighteenth, we'll have our last meeting of the month, work session in the afternoon, starting at two, and a board meeting in the evening at six-thirty p.m. We do not have board meetings the week of Thanksgiving. That means on Tuesday, November twenty-fifth, we're not having any meetings. Thank you very much. That's it for board announcements. Are there any other announcements from my colleagues? Seeing none, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn this meeting, and we'll reconvene in work session at one-thirty. What are the wishes of the commission?
So move.
All those in favor of adjournment, please raise your hand or say aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. We're hereby adjourned. Thank you.